Thank you. Our next item is the Financial Department's proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget. The recommendation that the Finance Committee, Governance Committee, recommend the City Council and Housing Authority Board conduct a public hearing on fiscal year 2023-24 and the proposed budget on June 6, 2023 for the City Council of Oxnard and the Housing Authority and provide staff direction regarding any adjustments to the proposed budget in preparation for the final budget adoption in June 2023. And again, this is a pre-recorded item and this is per Measure M. And we do have Ashley for any additional questions?
If I may-
Can you bring us, give us an update on-
Yeah, two things. First, hello, I'm Ashley Golden, the Assistant City Manager, and I wanted to provide some context for the discussion this evening. But before I do so, I'd like to invite our Budget Manager Victor Zambrano up that's going to go over a few changes that we've had since the printing of your agenda packet. Once he goes over those changes, I'd still like to provide just a few remarks to kind of frame the overall discussion. And then we have our executive team as well as Denise Olson, who was serving as the interim CFO while this was being developed, and we will be here to answer your questions. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Victor first, and Diego, if you can get up the slides.
But we do, we do have a speaker on this item.
You can take that speaker while we queue up the slides as well, however you'd like to do that, Mayor.
Okay, we got Mr. Portello.
Mr. Portello, please press star six unmute, and you have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, can I speak after she gives that presentation?
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll start the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Budget Manager Victor Zambrano, and I want to call your attention to several items that have occurred or are occurring since the Finance and Governance Committee staff report was published approximately a week ago. And I'll start with our expenditures. First slide. So as you can see here, there are 10 items on this chart, and although it looks significant, overall, it really is not. The cumulative change will not impact our fund balance significantly. It will have a minor impact, but not to a great degree. So going through these individually, I'll start with the expenditure side of the equation. You can see these four items that are currently listed. The three that you see at the top, those are going to be reflected in the budget book that will be published in a couple of days. That includes special districts, which is $3.1 million increase. And typically, as you heard, the special districts budget is very complicated and is usually delayed. So this reflects the adjustments that are included in their budget, and that's a $3.1 million increase to their expenditures. Most of that is related to professional services, related to anticipated additional projects planned for next year, and also some costs associated with increases in FTEs for special districts. With regards to housing, that also is an increase in expenditures of $117,000. Again, that's a timing issue in getting their budget input into the system, and most of that increase is for operations and maintenance expenses. Fire, we're recommending a $2 million reduction in expenditures from the Capital Growth Fund for Station Number Four. This will have no impact on the design phase of the project, but the CIP will be deferred to later years as future revenues become available or alternate funding sources. Number Four actually won't be in the budget book and not, it typically is not, but there is a $6.2 million increase for the non-city component of the Housing Authority. And again, we typically get that post the FNG, or at least we did this year, so that was not included in the original staff report.
Okay.
Moving on to items that will not be in the book for 525, but we eventually will include in the book if council approves. The first one is the Police Department. We're recommending a $2.7 million reduction in the 23-24 budget for property purchases. As you know, there are plans to purchase property for a new precinct. We originally had budgeted that in the upcoming fiscal year. Since the purchase is going to be made this current year, we're going to extract it from next year's budget, so we're not double counting.
Okay.
In addition, we're also going to include $100,000 for ongoing maintenance of that property in the police budget. For special districts, we're recommending an increase to appropriations of $172,000, and this is related to the general benefit increase, as was discussed earlier, and that is a general fund impact.
Counselor Matt Tron.
Yes.
Thank you. I just have a quick question about the 2,900 Savior's Road item here. Just to clarify, it's coming out of this fiscal year or next fiscal year?
The purchase will, if the purchase happens this year, we'll take it out of this year's budget.
Okay.
Only if it, oh, I see.
Only in this year, yeah. Originally, there were plans to initiate the purchase next year. That was accelerated, so we'll take it out of this year's budget.
Okay. And forgive me, because this is literally off the top of my head, but was it 2.4 or 2.7 million that we were looking at for that?
Originally, we had budgeted 2.7. I believe the new estimated purchase price is 2.4 million.
Okay. Just, okay, that's validating for me, thank you. But I think, just so it's clear for the public, that if they see that and they see that, wait a minute, that's not the amount it was, well, thank you for that clarification that it's 2.4. Thank you.
Moving on to the next slide. Again, these are items that are not going to be in the budget book, but will be if approved. This is another adjustment. We had originally budgeted $4 million of general fund monies for the IUF reimbursement for the water program. There is a recommendation to accelerate that payment to the water fund in the current year instead of next year. So originally, we had it in the budget, so this will extract it from the budget, so we don't have it again in both years.
Oh, so you're going to accelerate it, is it?
Yes.
Oh, good.
So that payment, just specifically for water, the water component, the 9.5 million that was budgeted for the IUF reimbursement, we will accelerate it, reimburse the fund this year as opposed to next year.
Okay.
For environmental resources, there's an item that is going later this evening with the Public Works and Transportation Committee for an increase in appropriations for $811,000, and that's related to agreements with, for big truck rental and toter. So that will increase their appropriation requirements for next year. And then finally, number six, there's a CalPERS adjustment that the city is taking advantage of, and it'll be a net benefit to the city of about $400,000. It will increase revenues across all funds by about $1.2 million, and it will also increase expenditures by about $800,000 across all funds for a net gain of $400,000. And then finally, on the revenue side, as we mentioned earlier, we received the special districts post-FNG staff report and their new budget. They're estimating a million-dollar increase to their revenues. And for water, this is just sort of the other side of the equation on the revenue side for the million-dollar, $4 million adjustment for the IUF reimbursement. And then lastly, the $5.2 million increase in revenues, which is related to the recently approved rate increases for water, and that totals approximately 5.2 million. So that will be an increase to water revenues. So overall, total revenues, pluses and minuses, is a net of 1.2 million. So now we're anticipating revenues to go up from 525.2 up to 527.4.
Good.
And that's all I have. Any questions?
No, thank you. Any questions? No, thank you. Then we get Ashley.
All right. Thank you for that, Victor. And I know that was a lot of information to go over. I think the important thing to keep in mind with those modifications that he's going over are those are all actions that are occurring and typically occur during this time period, and it's not truly affecting a large percentage of the budget overall. So we will work to incorporate those comments into the staff report that'll present on your June 6 meeting, and then as Victor indicated, they'll be reflected in the final budget book, provided you take action on those individual items. And so back to kind of framing the discussion before you this evening. First, I just want to remind all of us here that we were facing a structural deficit of $9.2 million just four years ago. We've been able to work to get out of that, withstanding a global pandemic, and thank you to the voters. With Measure E, we've been able to have council start to approve restoration budgets starting back in the 21-22 budget. That's allowed us to reinstate programs and services that we previously either eliminated or had to reduce. And so while we continue to make those improvements with the guidance of your strategic priorities that you adopted, we're also facing a lot of exterior factors that we went over to in a lot of depth at your February 7 meetings, but things like supply chain, inflation, labor shortage, and of course, the most recent Aaron Star litigation affecting the bonds. That is truly affecting how quickly we can restore services and in some cases, start or even complete projects.
I'm sure you're probably going to talk about the item three, the bonding litigation that's really going to impact a lot of the bonding for several items. Can you talk some more about that, or you probably haven't gotten there yet?
Yeah, I mean, it does. I was going to stay on the, since you all listened to my 50-minute-plus presentation already, I wasn't going to reenact the entire video, but-
By the way, you know, just to share, you know, that presentation maybe was probably about close an hour, which is really, really good presentation.
I told you all to get comfy in the beginning. I hope you did. But yes, the bonding litigation, it doesn't only just affect the streets and the ERP, which we've talked about. It affects things like the fire station that you just saw Victor talk about. It affects the aquatic center. It affects seawalls. It affects senior center renovations and the new senior center, which you've all been talking about for at least 10, almost 15 years. So it has a heavy impact. But as it relates to this current budget, it affects how much we can afford to do in one year.
And Ashley, I'm going to stop there because I've got a lot of calls on what's happening to Gonzales Road, and how come we're not fixing it, and how come we're, you know, behind and so forth. That litigation is a problem right now because of the bonding, correct?
It, yes, it is a problem. We do not have enough funds, if you're going to cash fund them, to increase our PCI. We will be maintaining our PCI at 66, which does not meet the council goal, and it's not the recommendation from your Public Works Director either. So it impacts it because diverting cash towards roadways also means that you're diverting cash away from many other services and needs within this community.
And we were looking at potentially the future for a 70 PCI, but that's going to take us a long time because we're stuck at 66.
Correct.
Yeah. Counselor Tron.
Thank you. And I just hope that you can reiterate that, Ms. Golden. The need for us to cash fund some of these things that otherwise would have been paid for through these bonds does mean that something else in the general fund, if we utilize that fund, is going to have to be reduced in some way. And typically, our general fund is our public safety, our recreation, youth and senior services. And I just hope folks understand that that's where we are now. And I think the example I'd used previously was learning all of a sudden that now you have to pay your car off in full when you had a 36-month lease or 36-month payments. And then now, well, how am I going to reduce, what am I going to take away from in my budget? Am I going to take away from groceries? Am I going to take away from utilities, fun stuff? What do I take away from in order to now pay this thing that I was otherwise going to spread out over a long period of time? So thank you for pointing that out.
And the seawalls too, you know, people have been working the seawalls for the longest time, and now we're going to have to wait on that. The senior centers are another one that, that really, really, we need our seniors to, they've been asking for the senior center for a long time, but because of the litigation, you know, it stalled, you know, which is really, really horrible.
I think, just pulling back a little bit, I think the other thing I really wanted to mention here, because I do know the video was long, but I want to make sure that the council and the community understand that we're planning for the future. We don't look at this year to year. So I spent a lot of time talking about the seven financial principles that we need to adhere to and what the benefits of doing and sticking on that course do for the council and the community and getting to that double A bond. And that is a really important element, is adhering to those financial principles. The second part that I wanted to highlight in terms of looking to the future is the sunsetting of Measure O. Council adopted the weaning schedule. We're continuing to recommend following that weaning schedule, and we need to continue to plan for these things in the future to put the city in the best position possible and to have that not be a $20 million. That's estimated in today's dollars, but to have a $20 million annual cliff in 2028, we are planning for that and we are following that schedule. So in taking into consideration all the external factors that we've already gone over in depth on the presentation and in looking to the future, what we're recommending to you in the upcoming budget is an ongoing increase of $3 million within the general fund, as well as one-time fees of projects around 12.4 million. Some of that has changed a little bit with what Victor talked about tonight, because we would do some of those purchases in this fiscal year instead of next fiscal year. But roughly $3 million in ongoing cost and 12.4 million in one-time cost, as well as with Measure O, as I said, completing the weaning schedule for this year, where we would transfer the fire department operations out of the Measure O into the general fund, as well as the homeless operations center. And then again, a series of one-time projects to the tune of over $15 million in Measure O, with the majority of that being due to the bonding litigation. In Measure O, that's $10.5 million alone for Measure O to go towards streets because we were not able to bond for those. So to council member Tron, to your point about other services, we're roughly spending about $20 million in cash, this recommending you spend $20 million in cash towards the ERP and streets, things that we expected to bond for. So that's a lot of money that could have gone towards other departments and needs within this community, whether that be recreation or police or anything in alignment with those council priorities.
And as far as the winning is concerned, Measure O, you're going to use a lot of one-time monies for alleys and IT contracts. I think 2.3 million for alleys, I think, is one-time.
Correct. 2.3 and then 10.5 for streets.
And then also, I think the IT for 1.27, one-time, you know, also-
For contract services to help with the-
Which is much needed, you know.
Correct.
For cybersecurity and et cetera, et cetera.
Correct. So just keeping all those external forces in mind, I do want to end on a high note before I turn it over to all the questions. The budget's positive. Is it what we wish that we were recommending to you, when being able to restore at a faster rate and give back to our community what they really need? No. But it's positive, and it's your third positive budget in a row. So like I said, we're not facing any service cuts. We're not facing budget deficits. There is no structural deficit presented, even though you will see expenditures are higher than the revenues for both all funds and general fund. That is not a structural deficit. Those are recommended one-time expenditures. And then without it, like I said, we have the executive team here, our budget team, and we have Denise online that can answer any questions you have.
One of the things I think that you mentioned in your, in your report was the, that we are adhering to the financial principles that are really, really important, you know, the maintaining the fund balance, debt capacity, budget flexibility, financial performance as management, cybersecurity, financial reporting. That's really also going to help us potentially with going to the triple, double A.
Double A, correct.
Which I think is really important. Can you share just a little bit more about that and that adhere to financial, financial principles that are really, really important, that we're following those rules, which are really important, you know?
Right. So in the video, like I said, I spent a lot of time going through that and the seven principles. But not only are those just good management principles, to maintain a fund reserve, to maintain budget flexibility, your debt capacity, investing in cybersecurity, your management, and having clean financial reports at the end of the days. Those things are all highly related to being able to increase your bond ratings. And increasing our bond ratings to a double A would allow us to have more access to financial institutions, typically at a better rate, which in the end saves the community money and opens up new opportunities, because you're not spending so much for that financing, opens up opportunities to be able to restore other services or other one-time projects.
And SMP looks at that center and pours this per your presentation. They make sure that we follow that, that financial principles that are really important.
Correct.
Thank you. Council members, any other questions? If not, okay. Speakers on this item?
Yes, chairs. We have two speakers on this item. The first one is Doug Portello. Please press star six to unmute. You have three minutes.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. And I'd just like to say, I did hear Rose earlier try to ask me to unmute, which I tried several times and didn't work. So thank you, Rose, and I know you tried a few times, so thank you for that. I would like to just ask, for the unfunded pension liability, what is being budgeted annually and the projection for paying that down? So from the current year and for the next five years or seven years, I'd like to know what's being budgeted to help pay that down, and what is the debt service annually for the unfunded pension liability? Now, there was some comments made about the Aaron Star lawsuit and that that's stopping a lot of capital improvement projects and other things. It's not stopping anything. You are choosing to bond out over $506 million when Oxnard's already number eight on the list of financial risk for not being able to pay your bills. So what's happening here is you just have an addiction to overspending is what it is. This is the reality, that you're biting off more than you can choose. James Aragon ran for City Treasurer, and he said it very clearly, and it was just really well put. You've got five major things that you want to do. So you make your priorities for those things. And everything else, if you want an aquatic center, you want a fire station, whatever you else want, then put it before the voters. Make it a measure before the voters. And then they will let you know if they really want that fire station in South Oxnard, if they really want that aquatic center. But to bond out $60 million for a single recreational venue with interest is going to be $100 million. Then you talk about the senior center and the homeless center and the roads. I really want to know where is all the $50 million a year from Measure E and the $20 million a year until March of 2029 from Measure O, all those promises that were made to fix the roads, enhance senior services, enhance youth-
30 seconds.
Increase 911 response time. Where is all the miracles of that money going when you're just kicking the can down the road and bonding out far more, and it's not good, sound financial principles, I can tell you that, and what the city's doing? It's dangerous, and we're going to pay a big price for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, next speaker.
The next speaker is Brian Rodriguez. Please press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes.
Hello. First off, thank you to Councilwoman Basua and Councilmember Gabe Taran for kind of seeing where I was getting at or what I was getting at during the previous item. I appreciate your comments and kind of the clarification. With regards to this agenda item, I really want to say thank you to staff for just how comprehensive it was. You know, I really appreciated just the data that was kind of mentioned and, you know, comparing some of our numbers with, you know, state numbers. I thought that was really helpful. And also just kind of going back to the council alignment and kind of constantly referencing that. And just, there was a heavy, heavy emphasis on, you know, the financial principles. And I found that really fascinating and interesting. So thank you for that. And Councilmember Taran actually answered one of my questions earlier. I did have a question about that 2.7 number, but I'm glad to see that it'll be fixed to 2.4. I read somewhere that, you know, our staff vacancies are at 9.25, and I just want to kind of uplift that and kind of mention that because I found that really interesting. And just to see that it rose from 6% last year to 9%. So that was interesting. And during the presentation, it was mentioned that we would need to spend 29.5 million for a PCI of 70. I was just curious how much money we would have to spend to get to at least a 67 PCI, just because we've been making quite a pretty steady progress on, you know, our street improvements. And I know it's not really recommended to spend any higher than the 20 million we're already projecting, but I'm just curious how much it would cost to, you know, at least try and get to 67. And I only did have one kind of critique of the presentation. I find the slideshow or the slide presentation, the kind of roadmap, I think it's slide six, I think it's gotten to the point where it's just a bit distracting. You know, in the beginning, I found it really helpful, and it is kind of helpful to kind of see where we've gone and where we've been. But just the dynamite, you know, portion of it, I don't know. I mean, it is helpful, but just, maybe if it could be separated out to kind of the past and then where we are, I don't know. I found that to be a bit distracting. But the last thing is just with regards to the upcoming meetings. I was just wondering if there was any community involvement with regards to this that's going to go on.
30 seconds.
They did a feedback form for residents, and they got about 200, a little over 200 responses. So I was wondering if there was going to be kind of a forum sent out. I think it might be interesting to kind of see whether or not residents are supportive of some of the, of the direction. And just to kind of get that perspective might be really interesting. And if not this year, maybe next year that could be included. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And once again, great presentation and report.
Thank you. So we had a couple of questions here. The unfunded liability with number one, and then the PCI going from 66 to 67, cost, if any. You want to go ahead, Mark?
Mr. Mayor, Mark Sill, interim CFO, I'm happy to answer the question on the pensions.
Yes.
So currently, the unfunded liability is broken down into annual minimum payments that we must pay. The amount for next fiscal year is about $25 million.
25.
And that grows to about $45 million by 2030. So I have a chart that no one can see on my computer, but it's a pretty steep line. So that's going to be a continuing challenge that grows every single year with no real relief within the next 15-year timeframe. So that's going to be a big cost.
And more importantly, not unique, most cities are in that predicament.
Absolutely not. The largest contributing factor to the unfunded liability is the investment returns from CalPERS, which every city is impacted by.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And also, the question was, what's the cost if we go from 66 to 67 in PCI? Do we have that information?
Good evening again, Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works. That's not a lineal question. If you noticed in the presentation, the pavement curve is actually exponential. So we'd have to actually go back and do an analysis for that. But for the most part, the way this would work is in the presentation, we talk about $19.6 million is what we would need from a hard construction cost to maintain our current PCI. Again, I want to make sure that is noted, that excludes the soft cost. And in order to reach a PCI of 70, again, in current fiscal year dollars, we would need close to $30 million. For ease of conversation, you can draw a linear line between those and extract out what it would cost to go to 67, 68, 69, 70. So you could do that, but recognize that that's a simplification of a very complex exponential curve. But, you know, that would be the answer to that. It's, you know, roughly in between $20 million and $30 million increments of a couple million dollars for each PCI point.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any additional questions on the budget?
Yes, Mr. Wolf, just along those lines, looking at what we are able to do in the coming fiscal year as proposed in this budget regarding streets and alleys, I know that it's going to be limited in scale compared to what we would like to do and what we had projected to do. But speaking to alleys specifically, because there are a number of neighborhoods in District Two and in other districts that still have alleys that have low PCIs. 2 and in other districts that still have alleys that have low PCIs, we'd originally told the residents that many of the alleys were going to be reconstructed using concrete. And so I'm hoping that we could just talk a little bit about that. Are we looking at resurfacing with asphalt, or is that still the plan to do concrete with those alleys?
Currently, the plan is to continue to use concrete for alleyways for lots of different reasons, one of which would be the type of loading that happens in the alleys. Solid waste trucks, for the most part, are very heavy pieces of equipment, and concrete typically does it much better in terms of longevity for those. Also, alleyways tend to be a very significant spot for a collection of salt water. So again, water and asphalt are typically mortal enemies of each other. Concrete is much better in terms of water conveyance as well. So we're proposing to do all those alleys as funding allows to do those in concrete.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. And again, even though it's smaller in scale than we would like to or that we'd plan to, given the current situation with bonding litigation, I do appreciate that we're going to stay the course with that with the concrete alleys. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, any additional speakers on this item? Yet virtually or in person?
Chair Zerakosa, we have no additional speakers, virtually or in person, for this item.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, just me. I want to quickly respond to Mr. Portello's speaking points. So first of all, the Measure E and Measure O, where does that money, where's that money gone? It's evidenced in the budget. So if you look at the budgets and compare them to the prior years, it's very clear. And I think that most people who have their eyes opened and recognize all the work that's going on across the city, be it street paving, tree trimming, landscaping, cast iron pipe replacement, and so on, I think it's obvious to most people who are rational that it's occurring. It is slower than we'd expect and hope for, but it is occurring. With regard to the bonding litigation, absolutely, that slows us down. Bonding is a tool that local governments use. It is impossible for any municipality, county, or even the state of California to cash pay for everything as you go. It does not work like a single household budget. It is not simplistic. It is not linear. It is not like a single household budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I did have one question for Ms. Golden, if we can just have this on the record. And I know, I believe you stated it during the presentation as well, but when we look at the slides of revenues versus expenditures, just what appears to be a deficit, you know, in what we're spending versus what we're bringing in, can you just speak to that for folks who may be watching this?
Yes. So that is not a structural deficit. The difference of the anticipated revenues versus the expenditures, the $219 million to the $231, those are the one-time expenditures that were explained earlier in the slide that they were approximately $2.5 million. With Victor's changes, those will go down a little bit, but those are one-time. It's not ongoing operation costs or personnel. We're not back to the man in the hole four years ago.
Great. Thank you. And just real quickly regarding the City Manager's comment, I know he, I understand the thought process in not comparing a municipality to a single household budget, but I'm going to do it anyways. But I just want to say, you know, to say that, to say that not financing a large project or a large purchase, I mean, I'm not a financial advisor, but if I go ask a financial advisor, should I purchase my house cash or should I finance that over the course of 15 or 30 years, based on my revenue that I have coming in every month or every year? I would imagine a financial advisor would tell me, well, based on what you make, realistically, you should do this. Otherwise, you can save that cash for 30 years and then buy that home. And how much will it cost in 30 years if you save your cash? Will you ever catch up to that? So I just wanted to throw that out there to say that it's fiscally irresponsible to be bonding capital projects out, that the community has spoken on a number of them and that this council has seen as priorities for a number of years. It seems the inverse to me, where it'd be more fiscally responsible for us to essentially finance those over the long period of time and spread that cost out over multiple generations versus everybody paying for it now, as long as, and then we take away from today's police, today's fire department, today's rec programs, today's senior services. So anyways, I appreciate what City Manager said. It does make sense to me, but I just wanted to throw that analogy out there anyways. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. And again, this is, we're going to recommend this to the City Council and, you know, where are we on this project, on this budget? Where should we go and where are we forced to go? I think it's really important information here, and I just want to thank staff for excellent, excellent work they've done so far. And we're recommending this to the City Council, and we need to motion this item?
I'll move the recommended action.
And seconded by Councilman Basua. Please vote. And thank you again for excellent, excellent work. Give us a lot of work.
Motion carries, 3 to 0.
Thank you. And I think we're probably about 30 minutes ahead of the, into the other committee, so we're going to probably start in the next five minutes or so. Thank you. We are adjourned on this item.